Meeting to order. Legislations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which is stand one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Teresa, we can do a roll call, please.
Mary Dustin.
I'm here.
Alderman Monta Leoni.
Here.
Alderman Hamilton.
Here.
Alderman Slattery.
Here.
Alderman Finn.
Here.
Alderman Broton.
Here.
Alderman Woodsey. You have a corner.
Okay, open the regular meeting at seven oh three two oh two. Seven oh two, okay. Start of the regular meeting is first thing we're going to have Brian Edes from Affordable Computers. Here's a brief explanation of the apparatus in front of us here. And welcome, Brian.
Hello.
Thank you.
So, present the leading out. Leading out is designed to, you know, take, you know, audio and video and broadcast it. So whether it's got a 360 camera on top and it's also got, you know, it'll zoom in to whoever is actually speaking and pick up audio. It will pick up audio from the whole room. So it, you know, if you got loud noise outside, it will pick that up too. I recorded a video earlier today. I don't know if you have that up, Teresa, or?
We'll go and talk about that.
So it'll pick somebody up, even if they're walking around, it will pick them up too as well. So it will do like a split screen if multiple people are talking. It will pick them up and record all the audio. You can tell the out was actually working. It's got lights on it on the front. So you can tell it's active, not necessarily recording, but it is active and ready to record. So.
And just to remind everybody, this is a trial.
Yep.
We did buy the equipment. We're going to keep the equipment, of course. We're not completely thing online or make it available to the public until we have all the Kings worked on.
Correct.
This is a trial flight.
This is just a test.
Just tweak it from here on.
Yep. We're going to figure out, you know, if there's anything that needs to be, you know, adjusted, whether we have placement, you know, to figure out if it gets better audio, if it gets better video or something like that in a different place. Right now, tonight is just a recording of everything. So we'll figure out, you know, we'll be able to, you know, look at the recording, make sure it picked up everything, make sure it did what it was supposed to be doing, if there's any tweaks that need to be done, or if there's any adjustments that need to be done.
Any questions for Brian? Anybody?
Well, I did have a question earlier, but I believe you answered it. When I had asked originally about equipment and stuff like that, that we get something that if we want to grow with it or become a little bigger. And you did tell me that if this is not sufficient, that we can get more than one of these to facilitate a room if we decide that's not exactly maybe clear enough or audio isn't clear enough, that we could actually get another one of those.
Correct.
In addition.
You can get an additional, you can get additional units, you can get additional microphones too. So like, it's like, you know, something that, you know, is not visible here or, you know, audio is kind of dull or something like that, you can get an external microphone and get, you know, put it in there.
Perfect.
So, and, you know, the system's expandable and you can add, you know, it's also based on the software that's on the computer that Teresa has in front of her as well, too. So that software is adjustable. So you can add like, you know, just a direct camera to pick up like the lectern or something like that. And that can be added into the software so that it, you know, picks it up and it can be turned on and turned off. So it's not, you know, always, you know, recording on that. It can be turned on and turned off via the software.
And as far as making this available to the public in the future?
Plan is YouTube, put it on all in YouTube. It's a great platform. It's, everybody can access it. It's not a, you know, one size, you know, fits something. It's, it, you know, it, everybody can access. You can access it via webpage, you can access via phone, a tablet, or anything else. Not to mention, you know, once you start doing this kind of stuff, you're talking into storage. And storing all video and all the audio adds up. And so YouTube being the platform, it's got all the storage and it can go backwards, you know, so you can go to day one video or day, you know, 537 video and stuff like that and go in between all.
Be there forever.
Yeah, be there forever. And you can also, it's got stuff on there, you can say, oh yeah, you know, somebody's still watching the videos because you can still see the counts going with the videos. So it's not just a, you know, you know, put it up there and you have to take it down kind of deal. It's, it's all, it's out there forever.
Look forward to it. Thanks, Brian.
All right.
Anybody else have any questions for Brian? Okay, thanks, Brian. Next item of business is fiscal year 2025 budget hearing. Jeff, we present that to our group here.
Well, if you weren't here before. So what we have before you is a draft of the fiscal 2025 budget. Again, the component parts are actual last year, current year forecast, succeeding year budget, as well as a, something that looks like, a nice title, they've, it's not required, a table of contents, not required, but it's a good thing so that everybody knows where it is. We have a statement of revenues and expenditures. The additional information, I think, is beneficial for five years. I'm not sure that on a going forward basis, we needed to do that, but given that this is a substantially different presentation than you are used to, I thought it would be beneficial to include that additional history. But as I said, I'm not sure that on a going forward basis, we need to do that. As we look at this year's budget, we recognize that revenues are actually pretty stable. If you look at, at revenues across this period, they've been relatively stable. We did start way back in 2019 with $2.8 million. Substantial amount of that was, was, was grants, and we received grants through 2022, and that's been the end of it. So if you're trying to compare current year, the forecast for 2024, or the budget for 2025 to those prior years, that's not a fair comparison because the big dollars back in those prior periods were grants that are no longer there. So if you take the grants off, so just look at it from a 2019 perspective, total revenues were $2.8 million. You take $4.8 million of grants off of that, you're down to 2.4. Compare that with current year revenues of 2.59 and next year's revenues of 2.6, you'll see that you are $2,000,000 up over 2019. So the city has experienced additional revenues, additional revenue flows during that period of time. Likewise, you can see the same things with respect to expenditures. Most important thing, I think, to recognize is there's one additional item here. Technically, we are required to provide as, as part of our annual reporting to the state, a reconciliation of fund balance, so that's what this is. So that when we put this on, if the state were to look at it, they'd say, whoa, they're at least in compliance with that. So there is that. When we look at this, recognize that, when we look at page four, recognize that we now have a new fund. We talked about this before. That's the sewer lateral fund. So we're accounting for the revenues. They come in from the sewer lateral fees, and we are accounting for the expenses, the sewer lateral repairs that are made as part of the city's sewer lateral repair program, which we hadn't done before. We were pushing it through a single line. Again, we anticipate spending more on capital improvements than the revenue we take in, which is just fine. And then we also have transfers, and I'm going to have to, and then likewise with respect to the general fund. I would emphasize again, just because I do, all of our capital expenditures are in one place so that not only should this be helpful to the board, but other readers of the city's financial, sorry, other readers of the city's financial statements. And then likewise, we are at this point in time anticipating a deficiency across the city with respect to 2024, and we should have an excess next year in 2025.
If, when we get into 25 here, will, will you have available for us a, an explanation of the categories and what, what specific expense goes into 2502 or whatever it might be?
I'm happy to answer any specific questions along those lines. I, to a large degree, I think as we look at individual account names, part of, part of the thought process behind creating accounts is to provide names as well as numbers. The numbers are really for the benefit of the computer and for the benefit of, of adding items up quickly. The names are really for the benefit of people who look at them because people don't care about numbers. People care about the what. And the what should hopefully be, to a large degree, but not 100%, in the name of the account. So when we look at, I just picked up page three as an example, and remember that we had road maintenance. And for the longest time, road maintenance was one number. And so when I started earlier in the year, I said, there is, there's not a good reason why you should put that many dollars in one account that, that so many different uses contribute to. So we've now broken all those out to mow and trim. I think that's pretty self-explanatory. Those are going to be the bills that I know you're familiar with from Mr. Beischer and his company for all of the mowing and trimming work that they do throughout the city. Likewise, street cleanup, again, that's a Beischer bill. And Beischer itemizes those lines in their invoices, so it's relatively easy for whoever is doing the, the dispersments to pick those out and put, and put those dollars from the invoice into QuickBooks on the right line. And likewise, snow removal, pretty, pretty simple signage. We don't have a lot of those. We end up having one, two, maybe three invoices a year for signage. And, and again, they could be different kinds of signage. You look like you want to ask a question and I should shut up.
What, would they, would that include the striping or is that going to be?
That's a great question, and you know what we, do we have striping?
With one below sign.
No, you know, you know where striping is?
Page five.
It's in capital expenditures.
Page five.
Page five. That's a great question, and the reason it's in sign, or, yeah, the reason it's in capital expenditure is because it's going to last longer than a year.
Right. The, also, could we, can, can we get on a monthly basis, a, a running total of the, of the expenses and per, you know, per category and also per provider, whatever?
My plan is to do that, and, and I'm just, it's taking me a little bit longer in terms of wrapping my arms around everything that we're doing here and going from a year and a half of bank statement reconciliations to, to getting 2022 done and wrapped up. And we are literally, we, we have an item this evening on the agenda for a budget amendment to 2023. And since we brought up the subject, I'll introduce it now, and then we won't have to talk about it when it comes up, is the reason that we're doing that is because we have spent more in 2023 than we appropriated on capital expenditures. So what you're going to see in that amendment, and I'm sure everybody's read it and they're like, what does this mean, Jeff? And what it means is, we are going to add additional budget so that we have budget in excess of our, we have an appropriation in excess of our spending, and then we are going to transfer funds from the general fund to the capital fund because with that spending, we now have a, an insolvent fund, so we're going to make it solvent.
So we will.
But, but to answer your question, yes, we're, you're going to have monthly financial statements from me.
Excellent.
That's, I think that's what you're really asking.
Yeah, that's the only way we have of knowing what we're doing here, I guess, as far as you got plenty answers.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay. Any other questions? I'm going to turn back to you, Mr. Ray.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. Item three is approval of minutes.
Any comments on the budget?
Any comments on the budget or any questions for Jeff while we're still on the subject? Anybody? Okay, next item, 3.0 is approval of the minutes for Alderman meeting of May 20th of 2024. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of May 20th of 2024.
I have a question. Paul, is there, is there some mechanism we have of making a notation on these minutes that we're not reviewing them until months later, so it's not necessarily of the snuff as far as accuracy?
Yeah, well, we can just add that comment to the minutes, your comment to the minutes.
Okay. Next item.
To this, you know, this month's minutes, when you're approving all these other minutes, there'll be a comment that, that some of them go back in time.
Do we have a motion to approve the May 20th, 2024 minutes? Tammy, second?
Second.
Joe? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any discussion, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes and the minutes, May 20th, 2024 are approved. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of September 16th of 2024. Carol, second? Tammy? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes, September 16th, 2024 minutes are approved. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of October 21st, 2024.
I have a question on that one.
Yep.
On the 21st, I might be off on my date, wasn't, didn't Mr. Latre have a lively discussion regarding in the citizens' comments regarding the medical form needed for the trash camp? I don't see that, do you? I mean, I, was my request maybe put in there, I'm just saying there is a.
This is going to help quite a bit, Tammy, having everything recorded. So, we'll go verbatim what each of us are discussing, so.
Yeah, I would like to say that my statement, it says there, Alderman Slattery stated his belief that requiring a doctor's approval does not make a lot of sense to him. That's really not what I said. I said that, and, and this is what Don Latre said, that he did not want his doctor's name and address and his signature involved because it's private information about him. And that's what I was saying as well, is that we don't need to, for, what we're talking about, and I know that you can get into private rules and laws and everything like that, but we're talking about a small trash container. We're not talking about things that HIPAA laws are intended to be used for. This is just a small trash container. And we don't need other people having access to private information about our residents. And that's what we were trying to get at there, that we wanted that in the comments.
Okay, and that's where, where it says Alderman Woodsey noted she did not believe there would be a large number of households requesting the small trash camps. That doesn't really represent what I was saying. It was more of a beginning or maybe a wraparound to what Mr. Latre, Mr. Alderman Slattery were saying where there's, I don't feel that there'll be that many people requesting it that we need to like make it.
So stringent?
So stringent, yeah, and so much medical information being out there. There's, I don't think there's going to be that many.
We did have.
If it was going to cost us a huge amount of money, maybe I could see, but although I did see about four of them just going down one street, but still, once again, when you take that into context.
We modified it, Tammy, and relaxed it quite a bit.
Yeah.
Modified the statement, modified the form.
Yeah, but that's kind of like, I don't know, when I read mine, I wasn't going to throw too much of a problem into it, but it, it didn't really represent what I'm trying to say.
Okay, and then also, Mr. Latre's comments are on page five. He spoke of the.
I guess I was looking for more, what we were just talking about, Mr. Slattery, more detail other than expressed his aversion to the small trash camp policy. I thought maybe it would be a little more detailed, but it doesn't need to be on time with it. Yeah.
Anybody else?
Yeah.
Michael?
Page two, the paragraph at the top, pages, there were no public comments. We didn't allow time for public comments.
Where is that, Mike?
Yes, please.
Where? Where?
Page two, paragraph at the top, in one, two, three, four, five, the six line down.
October 17th minutes?
Oh, that's the 21st, I'm sorry.
21st. That's what we're on, that's the 21st.
Yes.
Yeah, we are.
We're on the 17th.
No, you said 21st.
We're on the 21st.
We're on the 21st.
I didn't know that we approved the 17th, okay.
Yeah.
21st is for.
Oh, 17th is after in that order. I was going by date, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, which one are we on here?
We're on the 21st.
21st. Okay. That's where I was.
Okay.
And I believe there was a, there was a requirement that we, that we actually have of a public comments, and there were people here that wanted to comment.
Comment on what? I think that might have been when they were.
On the block rant?
Weren't there several people that said that they would hold their comments till the end?
Yes, and that's why.
Yeah, there was nobody that wanted to talk at the beginning. I know what you're saying, there was nobody that wanted to talk. They all said they would hold their comments till the end.
Well, that was at the, that was a sign up for the regular meeting. You had another sign up, didn't you, for the?
That was just to, to send in to show the people were present.
Okay, that was, so we didn't have two different sign in sheets?
Yes.
Yes, but one was for, to show we held a public meeting, anyone who wanted to sign that I could send it in to St. Louis County, which I did do, and then there is the one you signed up to to speak.
Okay, so your, your contention is that, that there was no one that wanted to speak?
Right.
Correct.
Correct. Yeah, Fred and Mr. Latre said they would hold their comments till the end, which, and then they both spoke. Correct? Fred's right there.
I spoke in the middle at first, and then he spoke at the end, yeah.
What do you mean to change it, right?
Okay, so, no time for public comment?
Under the community development?
Yes, right.
Right.
That's what, that's what public hearing part of this was what I'm.
We did hold a public hearing.
No, I, I understand that, but there was, there was no time allotted specifically for public comments. You know, it wasn't on the agenda, for one, that there was a place for public, you know, for public comments.
Oh, I know.
And I, and I know that that's a requirement from the county that, that we, we should have, we should have had a time specific for public, public comments.
Didn't that follow your citizen comments and petition? The people can get up and address the board?
Well, I, we've got two different things here. We've got the public hearing and then we've got the meeting.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah.
So you sent, you sent the sign up sheets for the, for the meeting as evidence for the public hearing?
Yes. They sent them to St. Louis County to show we held a public hearing, along with the other documentations that are required.
Right, and that, has that been sent in?
Yes.
Okay, who, who authorized the minutes?
You're doing that right now.
Well, if it's already sent in, we're doing it act of fact.
No, there's a, a, a line you can check where you can send in the documents by the deadline, and then once your minutes are approved, then you send them in separately.
Okay, so that's what we've done?
Yes.
We will do that.
Okay.
But yes, I met the deadline right now, like when you approve these minutes.
Yeah, the deadline was the 31st of October, so we're well beyond that now.
Yeah. Yeah, I met the deadline.
Yep.
Okay. I have one more comment to make on this October 21st.
Good.
Just checking with Fred, you made this comment about the intersection of Mueller Road and Antigo. And the comment states in here that Mr. Hung expressed concern for safety between Mueller Road and Antigo. I think you really wanted to emphasize the intersection between Mueller Road and Antigo because that's where, that intersection right there is where it's a real terrible intersection. And so I think we need to put in there that the intersection itself is really what is a problem for our city. Is that correct?
Good. We add that in?
Modify it, I, I thought that's what it said, because he expressed his concern for the safety. But if he wants the word intersection, I know we can do that. Okay.
Is that correct?
Yes, I guess it is. Nobody has killed yet, at least.
Right, he's concerned about somebody getting killed there, or?
Right. We can add that, that word?
Add the word intersection, sure.
Good. Okay. Any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve the October 21st, 2024 minutes?
I'm a.
Joe, second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
I oppose.
Marty? Okay, motion passes and the minutes approved. Amendment 10 is opposed. Okay. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of October 17th, 2024 work session. Do I have a motion?
I'm a.
Joe, I have a second? Tammy? Any discussions?
Well, wait a minute. That's the 17?
Yes.
The work session.
Tammy was, Tammy wasn't there.
I just thought of that after I said second.
So she can't approve that?
Right.
No, it's not true.
Well, waiting it, I could approve it.
Oh, really? Okay.
Roberts rules doesn't require that you actually be at the meeting to approve the minutes.
Well, there you go, something learned.
I almost withdrew it because I thought the same thing.
Any comments? I have a motion by, Tammy seconded by Carol, was that right, Carol?
No, I think it was Joe.
Joe, Tammy?
And Tammy, yeah.
Okay, Bill, Tammy. All right, I have a motion. Is there any discussion? All right, I have a motion, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes and the minutes are approved. Okay, next, I have, I'll maintain a motion to approve the minutes of October twenty-first, twenty, twenty-four executive session.
I'm a.
Joe, Mike, second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes and the minutes are approved. Okay. I will make a note on the, on the minutes of October seventeenth, there was a typo on page two, paragraph three, line three.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch all of that.
Okay.
October seventeenth.
October seventeenth, page two.
Right, page two.
Paragraph three, line three. It should have been one hundred and forty-five thousand, not forty-five thousand. Okay, as for the street lights. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Motion passes, did you pass the motion?
Yeah.
Okay. One, two, three, right? Okay, reports of officers and committees, citizens' comments, we've got three citizen comments. Ann Howard, would you like to speak?
I just wanna keep everything transparent about our thirtieth anniversary, and we did that big budget number, I just, again, it was just to appropriate the money, don't, I just wait spending that kind of money. But I want to give everybody just a copy of what we've done so far, so we'll, you know, we'll. And we did this, we went to the safety board, or the neighborhood watch, and I got a bunch of people to sign up to help out that day, too, so we'll continue to do that.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for doing this.
No problem, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, so if anybody has any questions, you know, for you guys, whatever, or, but like I said, we, you know, I know we budgeted a lot of money for this, but just coming up with the first few things, it's been a lot of money. Four port, four porta potties are almost a thousand dollars, so it's like, oh, this is gonna be kind of expensive, but we wanted to put it in the budget, so you guys, I mean, hopefully don't spend that kind of money, we don't really plan, but we just wanted to make sure that it's appropriated, so.
We got the room.
And we have room for it, so.
Right, okay.
Will we be approving things as they go along, dollar enough? Are we just gonna allow it to run up to that?
Ann will give us a week, a monthly update, what we're doing and.
All right, so far we've got the band booked?
Paid half a deposit, half.
Yeah, we've deposited.
Hold the band.
We had to put a fifty percent down with the fuzz on that, and then we also hired the balloon lady, Lolly the Clown, and I've checked with a lot of other places so far, like I said, the porta potties, got signed, my nephew works for a sign company, he's working on that, how much that costs, tents and all that, and I, again, page two there, or three, I guess, I put it in what I've checked up so far, so, so we'll keep you informed of what's going on, but hopefully it'll be an update.
Will we, will we be having more than just the clown, like bubble machine, or, I mean, more than just one activity?
Well, we're, we wanna have games, like, who the hoops was brought up, ring toss, all kinds of those little games that we can.
The pigs.
Do that, the pig races.
We're gonna have my pigs there.
You know, the duck pond, that kind of thing. We checked into the mobile truck, first, it was six hundred dollars.
Yeah, there's.
And they need an area of twenty by thirty feet, it's like, well, that goes our whole driveway, so we really didn't want to go that way, so.
You know, and we're shopping for some of these items, I've seen where it says that we're using Sandy's company, that's not necessarily.
No, and I, I just put that in there.
Yeah, I brought in some, some totes and things we'll talk about later, you may want.
Right, so, yeah, we just, we've got a lot more to do, just wanted to get some basic ideas, so let you go, know what we, kind of starting out.
Good deal.
Thank you.
Hopefully in January, we'll get going more and let you know.
Yeah, just each month, if you keep us up to date.
Can do that.
So forth, be great.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you. Good with all your, your volunteers, so, got nine volunteers.
Yeah, and I thought, well, if I come to another, you know, neighborhood watch meeting, or, you know, we do have the whole board who can volunteer, too, so I've got, you know, setting and zoning coming up next, or next month.
Yes, you do.
I'll be setting around a hundred people.
Thank you, Ann.
No problem.
Hey, Gabriel?
Yeah?
Gabby?
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Gabby, Gabrielle. I am part of the neighborhood watch group, and Ron was so kind enough to have me be my street's neighborhood watch captain, I'm actually a couple of streets now, and so I went kind of down the whole street and introduced myself to all of my neighbors, which was definitely an experience, just kind of letting them know about the meeting, and that we'd love for them to join, but I also, I have a lot of elderly people on my street that made it very clear that it's difficult for them to get out to these meetings, but they did have some concerns. The one that seemed to come up a lot was the lights, I guess on, there's one on Antral, but there's another one they were having issues with, I think on Alex, that was brought up at the meeting, but some of the areas are really dark or covered by trees, and the neighbor that I had spoken to specifically, she has kind of a good amount of tree coverage at the street, and is concerned because the street light, she's kind of in between the Alex and Green Park Road, which is a nice little chunk of space, and she said it gets really dark in that one spot, and she gets kind of nervous because she sees a lot of cars she doesn't recognize that will kind of park in her house, and so I told her I'd bring it up at the neighborhood watch meeting and see what we could do, I wasn't entirely sure, and Ron kind of let us know that that's not really something that the neighborhood watch can deal with, but the board instead, so I don't know if that's something that you guys have talked about, adding more potential streetlights to some of the darker areas on the street, but I know it is a big concern for a lot of the residents, because it was brought up by a separate couple that came to the neighborhood watch as well, that they had some concerns on their street as well, so I just kind of wanted to bring it to the attention of the board, but that has been kind of becoming a concern for some of the residents.
We're adding, as quickly we budgeted for several, quite a few new lights next year, and we're adding it periodically.
Oh, perfect.
I think it's, the next round would be the fourth round, I believe, of lights.
Okay. Do you know, do you know, like, already, like, are they already predetermined?
No, no, each of the aldermen, when we did last time, Eddie, to the aldermen, give us a list of the intersections that they wanted us to consider, and then what we did is we went with the people who did the surveys, to make sure we have adequate light for the solar.
Yeah.
In those locations, some of the locations that were chosen, we couldn't, couldn't power the lights.
The trees.
So, and some were inconvenient.
Okay.
Line of sight and so forth, so.
That's perfect.
We had recommendations, we'll talk about it next meeting.
Yeah, I love it. I just wanted something to tell, like, my neighbors.
Might give you that when you do your neighborhood watch, be a great idea.
Okay.
Guys, take note of that, and, you know, just come up with a list for us.
Yeah.
And last time we had X number per ward, and, yeah, we're adding to it as best we can.
Yeah, no worries. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ann.
I'll say, Amarin will install your own if you want one, it's eleven dollars a month. I have one over my driveway.
Eleven dollars?
No, if your people can't get one in there, they get their own, they would need it at that.
Is that, including your electrician?
They put out my electric though.
That's been forever, they've done that forever.
Yeah, we've done, since we lived here, we've had that, so that's eighteen years, so.
Okay, Mr. Hayne?
I'll be here for until the end.
You move it to the end, okay. Okay, rundown, next major board of alderman reports, I got a couple of reports here, you see the flag is flying again on the flag pole, we had the, had the clips, we, we got the trees cleared up, we got a new flag, the fire department put it up, and then the clips failed, so we've got the new clips, the flag's back up, but what I'm gonna recommend that we look into is getting a, an electrician to light that flag at night with a spotlight, and I think probably a real nice idea is to have someone sponsor the light, maybe have a memorial or a, you know, memorial to dedication, so forth, for the spotlight, I don't know how much the spotlight would cost, I could look into it and bring it to the next meeting, and then come up with an idea for, if it's worthy of it, at people, whether or not they want to sponsor it.
You might want to check with the people that did the solar lights for us, I, I think they probably have something that can light a, light thing.
Good.
I was so concerned. That's a favor, he's done this.
Another thing we want to do is we want to continue to update our road sign lists, Bill was assembling a list, and we're, try and get a list of, of your road signs in each of your, your individual wards, get us a list of where you see signs that need to be replaced, write, put them in writing and get them up to City Hall if you would, please. We have to buy them in bundles, we're not gonna buy them one at a time, have them installed one at a time, so we want to get them in groups of ten or twelve, so get those, get those in, and we'll look them over and make sure that they're brought to, to notice. Now, the Commerce Centers road construction is near completion, Derek will give us an update on that, we've decided, we're gonna put a RFP, a request for proposal, out for the street swi, street swiping, street striping in the spring, say that three times, it's good, we have to do it in the spring because we want to do it after the catwalk demolition, and they're gonna haul away some of the, the rubbish from the catwalk, we don't want them to come over our, our new sidewalk, our new paint, but we're also looking at doing repair, we've budgeted some funds for redoing the upper parking lot, which hasn't been done, needs to be done, and also to crack seal the lower parking lot as well, so that's coming. At the December meeting, just to bring everybody's attention, we want to invite everybody after the, after the December meeting, we always have our potluck dinner, so we're gonna ask all the, the various committees and, and boards to have their, and police department, you guys, bring your spouses up to City Hall, bring a potluck dinner, hopefully good collection of food, good selection of food, but that'll be after our December meeting. Thirtieth anniversary update, we got from Ann, just to tell you guys, Church's Fried Chicken at Lynn Ferry and Lindberg has decided to close, property is gonna be put for sale, it's not ready.
That's Church's.
Church's, what did I say, Popeyes?
Yeah.
No, Kentucky Fried.
Kentucky Fried, did I say Kentucky Fried?
I think you did.
And I haven't said it, that's a bad news.
What'd you say?
He said Church's.
Oh.
Did I say Church's?
Yeah.
Play that back.
Church's, Church's, all right, well, objective, how about that? Okay, the marijuana sales tax increase was approved by the public, and if we ever have a marijuana retail sales establishment, they'll be imposing a three percent, additional three percent tax for the city, for the sales of.
Now, I just heard on TV, on the news, that that, that was unconstitutional, or whether they're fighting that, because they already get charged?
No, that's.
What the argument was, was the county was saying they could also stack their tax on top of a municipal marijuana tax.
Oh, I thought it was.
So it'd be three percent, it was three percent.
Okay.
And the court said, no, it's only, in a municipality, their tax rules and not the county.
Okay, I heard, I understood it the other way, okay, thank you.
Okay, Amarin also is notified, notified as they're gonna start a vegetation initiative for any vegetation that's interfering with poles or lines in your neighborhoods, Amarin is in the process right now of running through the neighborhoods and determining where those problem spots would be, they've sent us a memo, we can go over it, all right, I'll hand it out, anybody has any questions on that, there's a name and a phone number on there, that you can call and contact the person at Amarin, and let her know that these specific areas need to be looked at.
When they come through, do they do what they used to do, where they just, they cut it themselves?
They'll have to notify you it's private property, that if they come onto your property, they'll let you know.
Right, but they do it themselves, they don't require.
Yeah, they usually send a vegetation letter.
Yeah, gotcha.
Okay. Unlimited play, the people with the playgrounds, at the last meeting, they gave a pretty nice presentation, they've sent us a memorandum of understanding, which Paul has reviewed and is reviewing, we're waiting for St. Louis County Parks to give us the written permission before we, we step out on a limb and, and put unrefundable money out for the city, so we're getting all our ducks in a row on that, and hopefully we'll have some answers in the spring. That's all the mayor has. Any alderman reports, Joe?
No report.
Marty?
Well, we mentioned this before, another, a work session or something, but about the real property tax.
Commercial real estate tax?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is there any update?
We're gonna discuss it the next meeting, at the December meeting.
Okay. Paul, I don't know if you saw the article in the Post-Dispatch today, Town and Country, they were loving attacks on their residents and citizens and businesses, to their added one million dollar budget shortfall, I don't know if you saw that article, if you did a chance, you may want to take a peek at it, I don't know if that has anything to say.
What was the county, yes?
Town and Country.
Anything else, Marty?
Uh, no.
Carol?
Yeah, I want to give a big thank you to the fire department next door, on Saturday, before Veterans Day, I got a call from a veteran who was very sad that we didn't have a flag up, and I did explain why, and it just kind of bothered me, it was very emotional for him, and I went over to the fire department, and they were very nice, I said, if I can find an extra flag, we need to get it up before Monday for Veterans Day, and I called Tim, and he met me up here, and we did him an extra flag, but we did get it up there for Veterans Day, these guys, when I brought that flag over, they all ran out there to get it up. They didn't have clips, but they found a way to, to get it up there, so that we had it up there, I'm gonna probably end up sending them a thank you note, as we should for, from City Hall, but they were really good about that, and they're just really great guys over there. Another thing is, Diane and I were kind of talking about this out of an accident, you know, we love those lights that we have in the city, and they look so pretty, there's a lot of small municipalities and things, they have those banners sometimes that are flying off of the lights and things, I don't know if it'd be possible for us down the road to get something about City of Green Park possibly on those lights, it might look really lot, nice, I don't know if it would end up being a maintenance issue, the wind blowing, and they get flimsy and torn and things like that, but it would be nice to have those, I think, on the lights, saying that we are the City of Green Park, so.
Be a great thing to bring to us next meeting.
Yeah, no hurry, that's it.
Okay, Michael?
All right, November fourteenth, I attended a, an event over at JB and their, and their meeting hall over there in the swimming pool complex, and that, this, St. Louis County is wrapping up a year-long study of equitable and sustainable comprehensive plan, is what they call it, I was impressed with, with the, with the people that were there, the, it was, it was very, it was, it was more like being at a, at a friend's house than it was at, you know, going into a meeting somewhere, or a presentation, and these people are, have gathered over the year, a whole lot of information about what St. Louis County citizens want, and I, and the, and the park department is one of them that's very, very much engaged, so before we start spending any money on a new playground, that's gonna wind up in the, in a St. Louis County park, I think maybe we better get in touch with them and, and find out what the, what the, the future holds for their plans for a playground.
Good. Good.
Ron?
Yes, we've talked so much earlier tonight about the expenses, and we really don't talk about hardly at all our revenues, and I, I know I've talked about this before, but our CDs, our certificates of deposits, we continue to not earn very much on our certificates of deposits, we're earning three and a half percent on most of them, even I, I'm making five percent on my CDs, you know, I don't have that big of a CDs, but I make quite a bit of more interest for. but I make quite a bit of more interest for my CDs. And it's just, every time I see these three and a half percents, you know, it just, it just makes me sick that we don't make more money, we don't earn more money upon, on these certificates of deposits. And with the change of the administration, if we see the price of gas go down, we're going to see these interest rates go down and the opportunity to capitalize on higher interest rates are going to go down as well. And we're not going to have that opportunity very much longer to get revenue from the CDs. So I think we need to start talking about this and really take a serious look at earning more money off of those.
Got it.
Also want to mention, we just had a really good Neighborhood Watch meeting just past November twelfth. The Chief of Police of the City of San Juan team with his group of people, and they gave a really good presentation at our meeting. Some of the people came and they just had a great time, everything. They even had a couple of gift cards that they gave out to people and Ann won one of the gift cards.
I won the other. Miss Toly.
She got a new pair of jeans.
What was it, Marianne, how much was it?
Thirty, thirty dollars.
Thirty bucks.
I bought myself a new pair of jeans.
And so.
We had a really good time.
We continue to do a rookie job with that. Thank you for taking that on. Anything else? Ken?
I didn't have anything until Ron brought up the CDs, do we? I mean, we have to have some that are coming to be matured before we can reinvent, so do we have any that are coming up?
Did you just discuss that ad nauseam this afternoon? Yes, we did.
We don't have to know like dates, but do we have any coming up quick soon, like within the next four months or something?
Just discuss this afternoon, we're going to have a presentation for your next meeting with some ideas.
Okay. Yep.
Okay. Tammy, Tammy, is that it?
Yes.
Okay, next, City Attorney Paul.
The short report on, I was talking to the prosecutor and there is discussion at St. Louis County Courts that the Green Park docket might move to a morning docket instead of an afternoon docket or evening docket. There also may be a change to our Judge Endicott and maybe Judge Brown is going to take over the, our court. And there's even discussion about it maybe moving to Clayton, but they haven't nailed all that down. So 2025, have more information about what the courts are doing, they might have some changes. So if I get any more information on that, I'll pass it along. And the one case that was on the docket about the last remaining basketball hoop in the right of way was, they had argued the motion to dismiss, but in the middle of it, the defendant asked, or their attorney asked for more time to do more research and the judge allowed that and pushed it off until January of 2025. That's the update.
I have a question, are those during the week or weekend? Because is that going to go the morning where people would have to take off work and go to these courts?
Well, yeah, what time's the afternoon, probably?
Five thirty or six.
Five thirty or six now, and so, yeah, if they moved it, then.
Wow.
But I, my understanding is, you know, people have to take off work a lot for the, to get there for the five thirty to.
Yeah, but if you can take off an hour versus.
Well, no, I mean, some people actually work evenings and stuff like that.
Do you have any input on that?
We very well may. I just passed on the facts, I'm not, the judge doesn't ask me, I don't even go to those, so nobody asked me about this. So we could definitely, when we get more information, we can discuss those issues with the St. Louis County, the people that are actually here that we have the contract with about that. Not, it wouldn't be a discussion with the judge, it would be with the actual court service. So I'll find out when and if any of this is happening and then we can talk about it.
And right now, they're held at Lume Ferry, right? I swear I have that turned off, guys, sorry. Another question, no, I got this right. Oh, so are they closing that location and not having court? Because why would they be moving it down?
Overloaded.
Is that what it is, overloaded? That's it, and you're not sure?
It's pretty crowded, there's only a hundred spots on that Wendy Docket. We've been a large contributor to that docket with the number of street violations.
Oh, my gosh, it's just such an inconvenience.
Tim and Kelly are continuing to catch up with some old stuff that had never been prosecuted that's in the system, but it hasn't been.
Right.
You know, we've worked on an ad nauseam to try to get some of these code violation issues and so forth brought to the court. Now they're in the court and it fills that docket up. So once we turn it over to them, it's their maybe, so.
They can't force us to go to Clayton or anything like that. Could that be a situation where all of a sudden we're at Clayton? Because could it be switched, and I'm talking ahead, it's probably so premature, but even considering a different day of the week? Yeah, I mean, all of that could happen because we don't 100% control it, so the only way we're going to control it is by saying, no, that won't work for us, and then we would have to come up with a new plan for the court. Whether that would be working with the neighboring municipality to share the court system. But the way the rules are, you have to have a full-time court clerk if you have a court and most smaller dockets don't require, you know, paying a full-time court clerk. So you almost have to share with another municipality or use St. Louis County. That's it.
Eric?
Real quick, street project this year, we're about 90% complete. We still have a little bit of pavement to do, a little bit of driveway aprons. Everything else is done. Wagner's schedule is to try to get it done before the end of this month, before the end of November. We may get into December with a little cleanup, backfilling, seed and straw. And as we do every year, once we get into December, we have to establish our, the contractor has to establish 100% vegetation on the project and we hold off 5% retainage of the project for that. We also do a final walkthrough to make sure no pavement's cracked, we make sure all the inlets are cleaned and everything's ready to go. So as we do every year, we pay 95% of the project that year and then we do the final payment once we do the final walkthrough and the vegetation established. So that goes back to last year, that's what you saw in the $43,000 on page five of your budget is the, is the final inspection. Typically, we do it around April time when we get vegetation established, but for some reason Wagner's billing department dropped the ball and didn't send in an invoice until last month. So that's where that amount's coming through. For next year, as we discuss every year, if you want to stay in Green Park Commerce, we can stay in Green Park Commerce and do another street replacement portion. I already, my goal is to get to Lake Bluff Drive, so I have a cul-de-sac to do, which is Green Park Industrial Drive or Court, plus get to Lake Bluff Drive intersection. I'm at about $500,000. However, we budgeted $300,000 for right now. If you want to make that change, we can make that change later. But again, to get out of that area, we're looking at $3 million, which is about $500,000 a year, which is about six years. That's the remainder of the pavement to do and it's the worst pavement in the city right now. We have also, we discussed Lynn Ferry, what to do with that, type of to-do improvements, not to do improvements. We've never come to a conclusion on that, on that road. Right after we're done with those, which is our street study that we did, that's the final portions of the street study that we started 30 years ago. Then we would also get into the residential area again and start doing either selective slab replacement or doing full replacement. And those pavements in six years will be about 30 years old. So pretty much at the end of life of that pavement.
You, when, when they get out doing their hot patch, will you, will you make a note on there at Timothy? The center has really cracked up there as well as that photo that I slapped the other day.
So to give you an update on that, we, I talked to Rick Wagner, who's going to, what we do at the end of each year is we get a list of repairs or maintenance that we get from the aldermen, we get from the mayor, we get from the city administrator, and then we ask the contractor, would you give us an estimate for certain repairs? This year, what we came up with was the potholes for all the subdivisions that we started first off of Teson Ferry. We talked about hot patching. Now, hot patching, we're getting to the, you have to have temperature and you have to have good weather and you have, once you get closer to December, the hot patching is too, it's too cold and the plants are closed down. So what Rick and I talked about, it would be more cost-effective, or as I call, value engineering. If we go with coal patching, which we may get into, we talked about cleaning the potholes out and then putting a tack coat down, which is typically what you do between your X mix and your C mix when you do asphalt, you got to put a tack coat down so it will bond to the surface. And we're looking at using a tack coat for some of these potholes, cleaning them up, doing a tack coat if we go with coal patch, and mechanical tamping, so we have a machine that will stomp it down and rather than drive over with a tire, which won't last. So you may end up seeing coal patching out there, but Rick Wagner was supposed to go out there last week and determine which holes are big enough for him to get his patching to stick. So we will look at all of the potholes, but if the pothole you mentioned is not big enough, it almost is not cost-effective to try to patch it and we may just have to deal with it until we do replacement.
All of one over on Timothy is a good, good prospect for you for doing that. It's a deep, and it's getting bigger.
So we're estimating that if he sends a truckload of, pickup truck full of asphalt and one or two guys just to do that real fast, we're hoping it's under $5,000 to get that done. He has not, he gave us an estimate of time and material. So it all depends on how much material he puts down and how much time he puts down.
Coal patch.
Coal patch. Striping, just to touch up on that, the reason we postponed it till springtime is right now you have to have weather and temperature for striping and we're getting to the point where it's not going to be cost-effective. And you're getting into the winter season, so once you put striping down and then you have a snowstorm and then you put salt down, it's really going to deteriorate that striping that we just put down. So we are vigilant that it's getting bad, but to be cost-effective, you almost have to do it after, after the winter and into, into spring and you got to find good weather and you got to have the right temperature and the right pavement. That's all I have.
That's it. Thanks, Derek. Teresa, City Clerk.
I went to the MSD Stormwater Project Two training last week. It's a mandatory class, it's done annually, it's done, it's completed. I'm sharing this monitor tonight where the audience can see, this is what you will see once this goes live. We are not live tonight, we are recording it for everyone to see what it looks like, it's just a demonstration. But any other time you turn towards me, I can see what you guys are doing. Okay? Thanks. That's it?
Deputy Clerk. Diane, regarding bingo?
Yeah, all I have is, we had a senior bingo October the 24th and we had 60 of our senior residents attend. They were very excited, they just loved coming to the bingo, wanted to know when the next one was being scheduled, so I'm kind of shooting around, for February, around Valentine's Day. We'll see.
Sixty pretty crowded.
Yes. We had to cut it off at sixty.
I know, it was declining there for a while.
Yeah.
We got a new bingo calling device soon.
What kind of waiting list do you have after you cut it off?
We only had a couple on the waiting list.
Do you, do you need volunteers for that?
We always need volunteers.
I would love to do that.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be great.
That's it.
Okay, Mr. Jeff Bloom, I think you hit the treasurer's report pretty well.
Well, substantially, I would mention just a couple of things. And that is that we are in the process of putting the CDs as they mature, pulling them into the job.
Jeff, could you speak up, I'm missing what you're saying. I apologize.
Okay. We can play it back.
Okay, I'll do that, thank you.
I'll try and speak a little bit louder and more distinctly.
I appreciate that.
And then Derek will go, yeah. But just trying to consolidate those, we do have, I do have plans for, as the mayor indicated, we had talked, I was nauseating, but it was a long discussion.
Good discussion.
It was a good discussion in terms of future for banking for the city. And so we'll have more to talk about with respect to that at future meetings. I would recognize, or I want you to recognize that, as I had indicated in previous meetings, we'd still have a couple of accounts to clean up with respect to the city's balance sheet, in particular, all of the payroll-related liabilities. So you can expect to see those curtailed as, in the immediate future. To answer, or maybe to speak more directly to Aldrin brought this question, you may or may not recall when I, when we talked earlier in the year, that I said we would do monthlies and I would, and I thought I also made the point that so, in the first six months, you can put them in portrait, but once you get over six months, the numbers start to get smaller and smaller and smaller till, if you had, if you had 16 columns here, even I couldn't read it and I couldn't read a lot.
You can use 11 by 17 paper on it, can't you?
And you can, but that gets a little bit unwieldy and I'm still trying to keep it wieldy as opposed to unwieldy. And so right now, you can see that we've got nine and this is on regular letter-sized paper and it's still legible. It'll, we'll readdress it if, when we have 12 months there, because 12 months really does push the legibility.
If you fold that 11 by 17, it becomes eight and a half by 11.
I, yep, it certainly does. It's called, it's actually called ledger paper. Anyway, I guess I'm getting the hook.
Do you, do you have any?
Maybe to, to answer Aldrin Sliden's comment about looking at revenues. Revenues, the challenge with respect to municipal revenues is that they, they don't change over time. Your, and your, most municipalities, I don't want to say they don't have a lot of control over their revenues, they have, they have control initially over their revenues. Voters pass different votes to be taxed or feed. Sewer lateral is a good example of that, started in, I want to say, 2004. And that was a, was something that went on the ballot. It is a quasi- It is a quasi-insurance plan and voters said, yes, I will pay a fee. And once that happens, it happens in perpetuity until somebody decides they wanna change it. And so consequently, and I could go through each and every one of these, and I did at a previous work session.
I can't do that tonight.
No, and I won't do that. I could, but I won't. But seriously, there's not the variability in revenues that there is in expenses. And so that's why there is often a lot more emphasis on expenses.
Thanks.
If there are any questions, happily entertained.
Jeff, on the balance sheet, you have 23 and 22, these two columns, is that just a typo? Should be 24.
Yes, it is. Good catch. Actually, I asked that question earlier today.
What was that? We had a bet on that, you didn't?
Yeah, we did. And I lost.
Five point six is the county police report. Officer Sanda, would you please give us a report for the month, five columns?
All right. October numbers, 364 calls per service. Item Dad, 212 directed, 152 self-initiative. We have three summits issued, 14 citations, nine warnings, five traffic accidents altogether, four arrests, 28 reports, four larcenies, one auto theft, one domestic, and a bunch of muni patrols.
Who's the auto theft at the car lot?
No, it was a failure to return from enterprise.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Good job. Winter's coming. Winter's coming.
Yeah, I know. Don't start your cars and leave them on and go back inside the house.
See, the auto thefts go up considerably.
Oh, yeah. We already are starting to see that, so.
Okay, 6.0 is unfinished business. We have none. New business, we have several resolutions. First, 7.1 is a resolution number 381. We've gone over this, it's a resolution amending the 2023 budget for the city of Green Park. Any discussion on this? Just went over it pretty thoroughly. Do I have a motion to adopt resolution 381?
So moved.
Second. Mike, first. Second, Joe?
Sure.
Joe. Okay, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Resolution 382 is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a change order on the contract for the street replacement project 2024.
Derek, can you explain that? Yeah, I can explain that real fast. So when we do this preliminary cost estimate, which is typically a year before the project starts, we had a certain limits of the project and when we walked in with the contractor, once the contract was awarded, we found out that we cannot stop at certain points because of deteriorating pavement and to be able to connect to good pavement. Also, some of the driveway aprons were deteriorated to the point where we had to do something to connect to good pavement. So unfortunately, when six or seven or eight months goes by, from the time we do the preliminary to the time we do the pre-construction meeting or walkthrough, we find out that we can't connect right where we were expecting to. So once we walked it, I walked it with Rick Wagner, we found the limits we wanted to go to, which expanded the length of the project. It's the street portion of it and going into some driveway aprons. Then I drove it with Tim and showed him the new limits and I also showed it to Teresa. The cost of going beyond the original limits is 73,000. So it's not a, an additional cost to the project, it's expanding the limits of the project. So that's where the, originally, Rick Wagner gave us a spreadsheet cost estimate back in September, which I brought to the board, which was around 73,000. And once he looked at the actual measurements, he downsized that to 71,300, so basically 2,000 less than what he predicted back in September. He did not submit the official change order until now, so he's late on that official change order request. But you were, you heard about it back in September at the meeting.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to adopt resolution 382. I have a motion.
So moved.
Carol, second.
Second.
Tammy, any discussion? Anyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Resolution 7.3 is resolution 383, resolution adopting an annual budget for the city of Green Park, Missouri, for the city's fiscal year ending December 31st, 2025. You don't wanna start all over, do you, Jeff?
I'd be happy to.
No, no, listen. I'll entertain a motion to adopt resolution 383.
So moved.
Joe, second.
Second.
Carol, any discussion?
Yeah, I got a question. Jeff, you talked earlier about the wages. $7,500 was not earmarked. What about the other $7,500? You know, $15,000 increased.
Neither, I said, I thought I said neither was earmarked, but I probably did that in the earlier presentation when you weren't here.
So all the $15,000 was not earmarked?
It's not earmarked at this point in time.
But it's there for you.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 7.4 is bill number 909, an ordinance of the city of Green Park, Missouri, calling for an election to be held April the 8th, 2025 for the office of mayor and alderman, one each for each ward of the city. The terms of the mayor, Alderman Hamilton, Alderman Witzig, and Alderman Monteleone will expire April the 25th. I'll entertain a motion for the first reading of bill 909.
So moved.
Joe, a second.
Second.
Carol, any discussion? All in favor of the first reading of bill 909, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Joe, please read bill 909 for the first time.
An ordinance of the city of Green Park, Missouri, calling for an election to be held on April 8th, 2025 for the office of mayor, the office of alderman for each ward of the city.
I'll entertain a motion for the second reading of bill 909.
So moved.
Mike, a second. Ron, is any discussion? All in favor of the second reading of bill 909, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Joe, please read bill 909 for the second time.
An ordinance of the city of Green Park, Missouri, calling for an election to be held on April 8th, 2025 for the office of mayor and the office of alderman for each ward of the city.
I'll entertain a motion for the final passage of bill 909.
So moved.
Joe, a second.
Second.
Ron, any discussion? Hearing none, Teresa, please do a roll call vote.
Alderman Monteleone.
Aye.
Alderman Ben.
Aye.
Alderman Brothens.
Aye.
Alderman Hamilton.
Aye.
Alderman Slattery.
Aye.
Alderman Witzig.
Aye.
Bill number, bill number 909, defense ordinance number 869. Any citizen comments? Fred?
My name's Fred Hayne, 10909, Acton Drive. Two quick comments. Tim, you called me a little over a week ago and we had a discussion about various things and one of the discussions was about the county highway department and getting it out of the city. And we kinda resolved that you were gonna talk to Paul about that because I don't know what the legalities of it are, but I think that needs to be moved on. And I'm sorry, the gentleman that presented this is gone. His presentation was very unprofessional and very inadequate. And I'm assuming that this is just a trial, that there hasn't been a decision, because it's a lot more complicated than what he made it sound. And what I would like to have is his or that company's who, I wanna know their address and I wanna research them and see how long they've been in business and how many governmental organizations they've done this far. And I'm hoping that you will look at other venues for this.
We've already purchased it, Fred.
I just, I, I feel bad he's not here, so he can't respond, but it was extremely unprofessional.
He'll be, we can have him back in December. This is just a trial alone, so we can go.
Okay, I'd like his, you know, the company's address, et cetera, et cetera, because I wanna do a little research.
Okay. I'll get that to you tomorrow. Okay, item number 10, adjournment, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Any miscellaneous?
Was it miscellaneous?
Well, I wasn't miscellaneous.
No, that was citizen comments.
Any other miscellaneous?
Not really. I got a question.
Plenty of miscellaneous.
Teresa, I asked months ago about seminars and aldermen and staff and, you know, using, using city funds and you sent that information that you gathered. So whatever began with that, are you waiting for the board to react, to make a suggestion or a policy? Because when I asked about this months ago, we didn't have anything in writing. So is that?
What exactly do you want, Marty?
Well, you remember when Alderman Brothens was talking about attending a seminar, webinar, and he thought there was money that was allocated, to be allocated or for funding for aldermen or staff or continuing education or things like that? I'm sorry, am I interrupting anything?
No, no.
Okay.
No, we're discussing, Missouri Municipal League, Teresa was in contact with, wanted to explain to you what they had said regarding the discussion we had last month about the seminars and so forth, that they're already paid for and appropriated. You can go online and pick them up anytime, Marty.
Annual, just for the municipal.
Okay, so this is just for the municipal?
For our annual membership, yes.
Okay, so if there's anything outside of that?
To the board. There is no policy that I could find. I've tried looking everywhere.
Okay, so I guess I'm gonna throw this out to the board. Should we have a policy in writing so we have something to go by instead of bringing this up once every two months, three months, four months?
Absolutely, we should. Yes.
Okay, then how do we go about?
Jeff, how much is budgeted in there for, for the training academy?
Actually, I'm looking at it, I can't find it.
Yeah, it probably got lumped in there with the, it's actually an additional cost. It's not, you know, you could be a member of the St. Louis County or the Metro of St. Louis County League and there's a fee for that, but then there's another $50 fee that gives unlimited of the 11 or so webinars that happen every month. And you can view them live and I think you can still watch them after they've been recorded too. So everybody should, you know, at least you've got $50 down there, but yeah, if you want to then have the ability to go to like the, it used to be called the newly elected, but now it's just called the elected officials conference, that the actual state of Missouri MML has, that cost is more because there's gonna be travel involved and hotels and all that. Unless it's in St. Louis. And it's probably about time for it to come back around to St. Louis because I think it's been in KC and in Branson this year, so. But yeah, we should probably look into what, how much money you wanna spend on training for elected officials and come up with a number for that that Jeff can plug into.
Can the board get a recommendation?
No, I'm sorry, can't this be shortcut?
No, no, I was just gonna suggest, can the board get a recommendation from staff of what, and then have something in writing for the next meeting or something.
And then probably, right?
Yeah, we could, I could find some policies that are out there and you guys can look at.
Something that we could approve to have a line item or a budget item, just to kinda make it official in terms of what it's for.
Appropriation.
So we have a policy in writing.
And then how would that be appropriated as far as if we have a budget? Is that just overall or is that per alderman?
Be overall.
Because if you have someone that takes 13 and someone that, you know what I'm saying, to where?
Well, that's gonna be part of your policy. That'll be part of your policy. I mean, how much you actually appropriate is a, is a sum total. It'll be like the lateral sewer fee, you know?
But that's what I'm saying.
One person takes 13 of them, he uses up all the money, well, there it went.
But that's what I'm saying, I think when, is there any way of?
You have to have a policy.
Yeah.
And so you'll have to decide as a board how you're gonna govern yourself on who gets to go where and how many times and all that stuff.
Yeah.
I mean, so what I would do is get you some stuff to start from and then you can just fill in some blanks or throw it in the trash or whatever.
For December.
You want that in December or in January? I don't know, it's pressing to have it in December. It's already paid for probably for next year.
No, it's not pressing, I mean, I got other things in January, so.
Well, you're, you're obviously gonna avail yourself of any of the training from MML. So the only question then is any outside training?
Exactly. Yeah, it's like, that one, that's easy, it's an X amount and it's unlimited and everybody can use it. So that one doesn't, you know, your concern doesn't matter to that. It would just be if you're gonna do, then what's, how, you know, how would, how much would you put aside for training and then how much, who can, how do you decide who goes and all that kind of stuff? And it might just be that you decide, when somebody asks, they come to the board and you guys decide, you know, like, oh, no, you know, Tammy went to 40 last year, you know, we're gonna cut her back this year, so, that kind of thing.
And in addition, as you mentioned, there's also the elected officials' training.
Right.
If that's held out of town, then I think you, as a group, need to decide, it's not even a matter of decision as much as a preference of who's, who wants to avail themselves of attending that elected officials' meeting, because it's a terrific meeting and they have a lot of continuing education that's part of that. Obviously, there's a, there's a, I think it's a relatively modest fee for attending, but then you've got the travel costs, you've got per diem or in some manner or fashion, housing as well as food. And so we can estimate easily what that's going to be on a per-person basis. The question is, do you wanna multiply it by six? Do you wanna multiply it by three? Do you wanna set any kind of limits on that? And that's your, yours and society.
Right, so what I'll do is get some stuff to get that started, hopefully and get some that I can, you can have in December and then maybe discuss it in January and then we can also discuss how much, you know, it's really just kinda decide how, what's important, which ones you think people should go to and then all that. So we'll revisit it in January. Certainly, a lot of, a lot of, obviously, honest cities go to those, those conferences or else they wouldn't, they wouldn't exist, so.
We'll adjourn.
I have one thing.
Go ahead, Jim.
This one, I had a chance to make a phone call up here. I was really pleased with the new phone system. I don't know if anybody's done that, but it's pretty, from what we had before, it's quite an improvement.
But we had Diane.
We've gotten rid of the tin cans with strings.
I like Diane answering the phone, actually.
Thanks, Joe.
She's number three.
No?
I like when she.
Motion to adjourn. Mike, second.
Second.
Joe?
Wait, were you saying something?
Yes, motion to adjourn.
That's what I, oh, okay. No, I, I thought you were saying something.
All in favor, side?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Please adjourn, Jeff.
8:31.
8:31. There is a winner.
Tim.
I shouldn't have delayed.
If Joe hadn't jumped in.
I should've delayed it by four minutes.
Pretty close.
I couldn't let you, I could've asked Jeff a question.